Well, once again, welcome. Welcome to the First Church of Squanton. So glad that you're here for the Squanton Community Association meeting tonight. In a moment, I'll hand the mic over to Louise Grabowski, and she'll continue that introduction. But we're so glad that you're here. Our expectation as a church fellowship is that we are about being neighbors and about adding grace to the community. And that we get to do this together and be neighbors together, it makes me, my heart warm. I just love it. I'm so grateful in particular that we have a chance to meet with the school board candidates tonight. This is one of the most important things that happens in our community. They're locally elected, by folks just like us. So thank you for making your time to be here. That's very good. With that, I'll pass it over to Louise.
Thank you, everyone, great. Good evening, everyone. So Squanton Community Association is happy to have you here to meet our school committee candidates who will be voting for three on November 2nd. And I'd also like to mention that in the back, hanging over doors, you came in as a voter registration paper if you need information on that. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to do brief opening statements by each of the candidates, and then we'll go into Q and A. So feel free to ask questions. And we just want to keep it moving. We don't want people making huge statements or comments, just the questions. And I have two that were emailed in from people that couldn't be here. And then we'll do closing statements, and then you can meet and greet with the candidates. And thank you very much for being here. And hope you enjoy your day. Okay. So I'd like to call Liz Speekman first to come up and give her opening statement.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. I know you all have a million things that you're juggling, and so taking some time out to be here with us tonight is wonderful, and I'm very grateful for that. So my name is Liz Speekman. I am a clinical social worker. I'm also a mom. I have two little boys, eight and three. I've spent the last 20 years working in mental health, supporting systems as well as individuals in groups, particularly around issues of trauma. I have helped systems understand and minimize the impacts of trauma, as well as working with individuals in groups to heal from trauma. I think that's a critical skill for us to have on school committee in this moment as we're emerging from this pandemic. Certainly, we know many of our young people have been traumatized by many of the aspects of things that have happened over the past 18 months, and I think we need to have that voice and that perspective on our school committee as we look towards the future and we understand how do we help our students not only heal from the trauma, but become even more resilient from that time. I'm excited. I've been involved in many different parent organizations over the past years, and I'm excited to bring my skills as a clinical social worker and my experience as a parent living with the policy implications of school committee every day to the school committee and bringing that perspective to our community. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Liberty Schaaf. I have a degree in early childhood education and business management. I also have six fantastic children. And after having my children, I've learned how to become an advocate for those children. They are vastly different, and advocating for them and all of their needs has brought me down some fantastic paths. I've met lots of fantastic teachers, administrators, and support staff. I've been on PTO ever since my first child entered the doors of Akron High Elementary School. I like to be active and hands-on, and I think that I have ridiculous amount of experience dealing with Quincy Public Schools, going through it myself. Two of my children have graduated, and I have four currently enrolled. I'm vested in this system. My daughter just started first grade. She is just starting her educational career in Quincy and will be there for quite some time. I would like to make this the best possible system for all of the children in Quincy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Doug Guthro. I'd first like to thank the Squanton Community Association. I love the fact that the First Church has a pastor whose first name is Doug. And many of you know me because I've served the city in a variety of different capacities over the last 20 years. But I want to start with a short story. And the story is that when I first ran for school committee four years ago, I had two sons, one that was in middle school and one that was in high school. And because Quincy has open enrollment, my sons got the opportunity to choose which high school they go to. Sure enough, one of my sons chose Quincy High School, the other chose North Quincy High School. You don't want to be in my house on Thanksgiving Day. But what that enabled me to do is to have an insight into the both high schools in a way that few have that opportunity, through the lens of the parent. It's really benefited me to see the similarities, the differences, really the deficits and the exemplary activities and programs that they have in both high schools. When I first ran for school committee, one interesting point was that my kids got to high school, and they did not know how to type. There was no required typing class. If you think about your own children out there, everybody has a tablet, a computer, or literally a phone. And my kids got all the way up without a mandatory typing class. So I became an evangelist for digital literacy. And I'm proud to have served on the school committee that, over the course of the last four years, has helped bring forward a digital literacy curriculum. I tell you that because as we navigate the pandemic, return people back to the classroom for in-person learning, deal with some of the learning loss, the social-emotional deficits that we have, we look to construct a new Squanton Elementary School, and deal with a lot of the issues that are super important. I will bring the same passion, energy, and activism to those issues that I brought to the digital literacy and some of the other issues because I had that vantage point as a parent in both high schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the church for inviting us. My name is Emily Lebo, and I am running for reelection to the school committee. So first, I want to tell you that I am invested. I've been in the home environment in the city for 46 years, raised three of my children here, all who attended the schools, was a room mother and on the PTO for years, was responsible for reopening the Lawson School with some of my neighbors. We picked it at the school committee, it doesn't matter. But anyway, my three sons have all moved back to Quincy and have bought homes here as well. I have seven grandchildren, six of whom are in the schools at three different levels. And I have a son who's a small business owner in Quincy. So I'm definitely invested in this city. And my daughter-in-laws have been on PTOS, my sons have been coaching. One of my daughter-in-laws actually just formed the Quincy Moms Hockey League. So if any of you hockey lovers out there, she's got the mothers in Quincy skating with her now. Besides being invested, I'm also experienced. I served on the school committee for 10 years, but I've also been an educator and administrator in Quincy Public Schools. But I still work as a consultant for school districts on their data and also on programmatic changes and development programs with the Department of Education. I'm also a registered nurse. I taught nursing in the high school, and I still have my nursing license, and I have my Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education license as a allied health teacher and as a director superintendent. So I'm still actively engaged in the work that's being done. I have lots of experience, and I have made some accomplishments. I'm not going to go into all of them because I certainly haven't done them alone without my colleagues on the school committee, but a few that I want to mention is that, for the first time in a long time, health educators are going to be working in our high schools. Starting this September happened. We brought them into the middle schools a few years ago, but they never had them in the high school since, maybe since the last time I taught there. The other thing I did along with my colleague, Mr. Guthro, is we worked hard to make sure Doug came in and was a component in both of our high schools and all of our middle schools starting this year, so they will be teaching a lot of healthy relationships for our children. And we also worked with a group of students and teachers and administrators to put together a collaborative curriculum piece where the students could choose some diverse authors to read inside the curriculum in their high school. So I'm really proud of those things. And one of the things I also worked on was I championed and led a team that put in place a brand-new homework policy. After a long time, it should have been updated a long time before that, but we put it in place. We got information from students, teachers, parents, and administrators, and we built a brand-new homework policy that does not demean teachers or make kids do busy work. So we made sure it was going to be homework that was appropriate and not busy work because the teachers were being evaluated on whether or not they gave homework, even if they didn't need to. So I'm very proud of that, and I hope you'll consider putting me back, as I much want to do. Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming out tonight, and thanks to Louise and the community association for having us tonight in the church. My name's Courtney Perdiós, and I'm running for school committee. I have three children in the school system. Casey, my oldest, is home doing homework. She's in eighth grade at Central Middle School. And Jay, my little right here, is my photographer for the evening, so if you notice her with a camera, she's taking all the pictures tonight. She's at sixth grade at Central, and my little one Hannah is in fifth grade at Point Webster Middle School. So they're why I do this. They're my passion, they're my connection to the Quincy Public School System. I've been involved with QPS since my oldest, as Liberty mentioned, since my oldest walked in the door, just being supportive on the PTOS however I could, helping out with fundraisers, just being able to network with other families, get our questions answered. And the more you get involved, the more you learn about things, the more you make those connections, people come to you and say, hey, I have this issue, do you know who I should talk to? Researching that, finding that out, and helping people. And that's really what this is all about, is helping our parents navigate the school system. And my kids have had a great experience, but not everybody has. So being able to help and be of service is really what's important to me. I am a current school committee member. I was appointed earlier this year to fill a vacancy on the committee in February, and I've just really, really loved the job. I used to sit in the back of the school committee room. I was kind of the school committee rat in the back that would think about all the questions I'd ask if I was ever up there and wonder why people weren't asking them. And I'm a little nervous, sorry, just going to take a sec. And so then I realized that the reason they weren't asking is because they didn't have younger kids in the system. So two years ago, I ran for school committee to be able to represent families on there, and came up a little short, but did pretty well. I got about 6,000 votes across the city, met a lot of people at their doors, did a lot of outreach. It was really part of our campaign that year. And our hard work paid off because when there was a vacancy, I was appointed to that seat. And like I said, just really been loving speaking up for our families, our teachers, finding out what they need, how we can be supportive and advocate. You know, I see the school system as kind of a triangle with our families, our students, and our teachers, and the school committee oversees that triangle, just figures out what's broken, what could be better, and advocates for that and puts policies in place for that. So that's what I see my role as. I'm excited for your questions tonight, looking forward to it. Thank you.
So I was last on the ballot, and now I'm last in the speeches. And, you know, I'm nervous. I know we all a little bit nervous when we have to get up there and speak and state our case and why we think that would be a good candidate for school committee. I am a lifelong resident of Quincy, and I'm not running against anyone. I'm not running because I think we need to fix anything. I'm running because I think that my personal and my professional experience, I'm at a good place right now where I can contribute in a way that's experienced, and I like to say committed and practical. And I hope that I was a parent of, I am a parent of four daughters who all attended the Quincy Public Schools. So my experience as a parent of four girls who went through the system, I was in, I have worked in education for almost 30 years as a teacher and an administrator, and as well as my personal and professional experience in those areas, I think will help me to contribute in a meaningful and deliberate way when it comes to school committee discussions. We have a lot of complicated initiatives, exciting initiatives that are coming forward in the school system. We have a new learning center to address students who have autism and learning needs. We have an early college program that has been initiated, and I have a master's in higher education, which I think will be impactful when we start talking about that rollout and its rollout, but developing it and making it be substantial. So I think really what I hope to do is, if I'm elected, bring a voice of personal and professional experience to the table so that we can give the students in our school system what they need to be able to excel in their academic goals and also in their professional goals. Because some students are going to want to go to college and continue with their academic objectives, and then others might want to be in a profession that the VOTEC and some of the other skill training programs that we have at the school system will help them to move forward in that area. So we have a lot of great things going on in the school system. And again, I think at this time of my life, I think I'd be a great candidate to be able to come in and provide some practical and committed and experienced focus to the school committee. So thank you. Thank you, Tina Cahill. So I'll introduce everyone again, and then we'll open up questions from the audience. And in case you want to direct your question, then you'll know their name, hopefully. Or you can direct your question generally, and then the candidates could raise their hand, and I'll call them to answer. So we have from this side, we'll put Lisa Cahill first this time. Tina, Tina, oh, sorry, she's changed her name. Tina Cahill. Now you're going to be first. Okay. And we have Courtney Perdiós, and we have Emily Lebo, and we have Doug Guthro, and we have Liberty Schaaf, and Liz Speekman. And who would like to go first? And if you feel like you need the microphone, you can come up or speak loudly. Just raise your hand. Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
One question. So I saw you were a pretty high school freshman here. They had the open house the other night, and the teachers were a little overwhelmed. This year is 500 enrollment in North Quincy High, more than Quincy High. What is, what are we planning on doing to help that gap? Are more teachers going to come from Quincy High? The teachers said, even called, they literally said, we can't control all these children. It's 500 in your freshman class. What do you think is the best resolution for this?
Emily Lebo will begin.
So thank you for that question. So we have not been told the enrollment numbers yet, but we have specific class size mandates, and if there is a need, we will move teachers. And we've done that in the past. But we have not seen the enrollment. We're expecting to get it this month because October 1st is when the enrollment data is stabilized and sent into the Department of Education. So we will be hearing that, if not before, at our next school committee meeting, and we will be watching those class sizes closely to make sure that they are over our limits because we have established limits. And if something happens, we'll move people. And Doug Guthro will also answer that question.
Thank you for the question. I was at the open house myself. I met with all my sons' teachers. I had the opportunity to talk to the new principal while I was out there. And it's a double-edged sword for all of my sons' teachers because I'm obviously in there asking about my son, but I do ask a lot of close to other questions. Class size is always first and foremost. I ask them, you know, how did they manage during the pandemic? How was remote learning? What was the connectivity of the kids? Did they see any social-emotional issues? But I understand, based anecdotally on what the teachers were saying, that the enrollment numbers were up at North Quincy. And as Emily says, this is something that has to get presented to the school committee, and then we talk about how the administration is planning to manage it. And it's an important issue because class size is an important issue. And we, when we deal with the school improvement plans, we ask that question of specific principals. But that's an important issue, especially at the beginning. And I know that class size matters. With my kids, class size matters. And I know that we'll be vigilant to try and ensure that that can happen. So I don't know how they're going to manage that moving forward, if there are space issues, if there are hiring issues. But we need to adequately staff Quincy Public Schools so that we retain smaller class sizes.
Yes. Any other questions? Yes.
I think I can talk loudly enough. I was wondering if any of you could address the issue of diversity in the schools, particularly in the younger grades. I'm speaking particularly of the Asian children. They're now 30% of the city, and I would assume there would be some adjustments bringing these young ones into the classroom. Is anything specifically being done to address that issue?
Liz Speekman will answer my question first.
I will take the question. I don't know if I will answer. No, do my best. So I don't know if QATV picks up when the mic isn't used, but for folks who are viewing at home, the question was about diversity and the fact that about 30% of our population is Asian, and wondering, you know, what the school system does to support students, I'm guessing of all racial and ethnic backgrounds, in linguistic capacities as well. So I've been the co-chair of the Equity Diversity Inclusion Subcommittee of the Citywide PTO and a member of that group for years, and it's certainly a huge component that the parents have talked a lot about. And I know the school committee created an Equity Diversity Inclusion Subcommittee last year, which we were really excited about. And one of the things that I've been advocating for is family liaison positions that many other school districts have, and those were included in the budget for this year, two full-time positions. And essentially, those roles are meant to be a bridge between various linguistic and cultural communities and the school, knowing that many families, for different reasons, don't necessarily feel like they can have access to the information that they need about their student because of language barriers, cultural barriers, sometimes just a lack of understanding about the way that the system works compared to their home country. And so having family liaisons that are representative of different cultural backgrounds and speak the language of folks in our community can help be a bridge to the amazing resources that we have through the Quincy Public Schools. The other thing I've really advocated for is a language line so that the staff can very quickly and easily call up families and speak to them in their own language and not have to call in an interpreter or ask someone who speaks the language, but they have access to a language line anytime to create that connection with families. We have an amazing English language learner program in our schools, and I think that we can, you know, improve upon that. And the schools have done an amazing job in the past few years in increasing translation access. And I think personally, I would love to see us have a language access policy that clearly delineates what are the expectations, not just federally, what's required of us through special education, but what are the expectations that we have as a community around access to information in folks' own language. So that's something that I would personally be advocating for if I was on school committee to make sure that there was a standard expectation of language access for all of our families. I hope that attends to your question in some way. Thank you for that question. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Doug Guthro will take the question also.
I just want to say, in the audience, we have Frank Santoro. Frank Santoro is also a member of the school committee, and he's the chairman of the Equity Diversity Inclusion Subcommittee. And as he can attest, and Emily can attest, the three of us are members of the Equity Diversity Inclusion Subcommittee, and we have a list of 15 different matters that we're dealing with. And the matters that you speak about are super important to us. One of the issues that we just had a series of virtual meetings on was some COVID relief money called ESAR funding for writing different purposes. But one of the pieces that we advocated for was around translation because translation services are important. And if you work in healthcare, if you work in government, regardless of where you work, the remote workplace has changed dramatically, and the need for instantaneous translation or interpretation has become more important than ever. You know, I think QBS has done a good job getting us to where we are. We have a great ELL program. And, but I think that there's more to be done, and I think a lot of the feedback that we got through parent and teacher surveys and student surveys indicates that that's an area that we're lacking on, and we can invest in more.
Tina Cahill will also take the question. And I'll make it quick. But I think that one of the things that I've seen and I've learned while I've been on the campaign trail is that communication with parents and, you know, the school system is really important to everyone. And, you know, what my colleagues up here on the stage are saying that, you know, if your parents aren't able to communicate and advocate for their children, then it affects the child's education and, you know, and the benefit of education in the system. So translating and having translators, I think, is important for the students, the families, the parents, and the community. And communication and open lines of communication for all of our families is important. So that's why coming up with these initiatives is really an important piece of the puzzle for the students who need it most.
Thank you. So along with the translation, I think one of the things we've discovered in the past few years, we did a survey called the Vocal Survey, and it was very dismaying to me and my colleagues to see how many students said they never saw themselves in the curriculum. They never saw a family that looked like them, or a family that ate like them, or a family that had the same traditions of them in any of our curriculum pieces. And we have been working hard to make sure that's changing. There's actually a group in the, we've been pushing for it, and we've been using the ESAR funding as well to update curriculum. We've been pushing for this to happen, and I think we've really have made some progress. In the middle schools last year, it was one book, one school, one book, and it was terrific. It really was terrific, the book they were reading. It was a graphic novel, so it wasn't something I loved that much, but it was something that it was great. And my grandchildren read it also. It was really a great idea. So I think that's really important, and I think because of the collaborative curriculum piece we put into the high school, we'll see more of the students seeing themselves in the curriculum when they see books by diverse authors. So I'm really looking forward to that.
And Courtney Perdiós?
Thank you. So I don't want to reiterate what everyone up here said, but I did want to add one piece to that pre-COVID, for a bunch of years prior to COVID, a lot of the schools had international nights where a lot of the families were invited to come in and bring dress and food and dance from their culture and basically present to all the families from that school. And I know I was, for Clifford Marshall, there's a lot of different nationalities that are represented at Marshall, and it was beautiful. It was awesome to see the dances that they had on stage and just the pride that they had in their culture and where they came from, and just to share it with everyone in a way that you don't always get to, I think, in the classroom. And it really brought a lot of families in and engaged a lot of families that we didn't normally see at PTO meetings or, you know, book fairs and things like that. So I think that the family liaison position is a really good way to bring those families in. And the more families, the more voices you get engaged, the more, you know, comprehensive our students' experience is going to be. But I think that's just one more thing I wanted to add there. So thank you.
Yes, anyone else? Any other questions? Oh, here.
I just, and I, and it's because I don't know the answer. How often does the curriculum get updated? And if you can speak as school committee candidate, you're, you know, how often are you involved in the process? Do you get drafts? Like, was it recently updated? You know, is it updated every year, submitted to the school committee for a review and discussion and recommendation, or is it come straight from the state level? I mean, it's just for educational purposes for myself. I'm kind of interested because we all know there's so many changes that's happened during the pandemic and that we needed as the city to grow and be diverse and strengthen. But if you can speak to the curriculum pieces in particular, how often, how frequent do you guys get to see it, review it, comment on it, circulate back and forth? Just describe that process, if you may.
Emily Lebo?
So I can talk about it a little bit. The curriculum, as you probably know, is dictated by the Department of Education. There are curriculum frameworks. There are certain standards that we have to teach to, and those standards are assessed. And we do a very good job of that. But when things get updated, and unfortunately, they don't get updated enough, we do have a presentation. Recently, social studies was updated, and we had a great presentation because we were asked, and they were actually looking for some more information with indigenous people that had lived here, and they put that into the curriculum. They also put civics into the curriculum. So we had a presentation from those folks on how it was going to be done, and we asked them to come back afterwards to do it. One of the things I'm most dismayed about is the health curriculum is 21 years old. I think most things haven't changed as much as health has in 21 years, and the curriculum is still 21 years old. But our teachers are doing a very good job of bringing in other information and from the state standard, I mean, the national standards, even though the state hasn't gotten to it. They're supposed to be updated every three to five years, but it's not being done. So they dictate it to us, and we teach to what they ask us to teach it.
So it's every three to five years, it's supposed to be, you're supposed to receive something from the state?
They're supposed to reevaluate the frameworks and give them back to you. Even in the technical programs, there are frameworks that you have to teach to that are assessed. So that's how they figure out the schools are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Doug Guthro?
I just want to add to that. You know, the way we're structured in the school committee, we have different subcommittees, and Emily heads up. It's called the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee. This curriculum is part of that portfolio that we deal with. And so in addition to social studies, we also had an update, at least in my time, about the math, some of the math curriculum as well. So it's not necessarily annual, but it's episodic. But if a member has an interest or, you know, I mean, actually, if people call and ask us questions, we raise those issues before the school committee, and we can get an update on it. So if there's a particular... So if there's a particular interest in any area of the curriculum that a parent has or anybody here today, all you have to do is ask a member of the school committee and we can inquire about it. And if it's something that really requires a forum, we can introduce it and we can have a public discussion about it. But we try to stay enlightened about what's happening. And I think the superintendent and his leadership team does a pretty good job updating us when there are changes at the state level and some of the things that we need to consider or incorporate locally.
Courtney Perdiros?
Thank you. So yeah, I just wanted to also say the ESAR grant money that was spoken about earlier, we did actually hear that some of that money will be going to updating some of the curriculum materials, which are much needed. And Doug mentioned the superintendent's leadership team. Maddie Roy is the curriculum director and just does a fantastic job keeping us in the loop on when curriculum needs to be updated, why it needs to be updated. And she really kind of has a pulse from the teachers of if they're getting frustrated that it's getting too old and, you know, what external resources they're pulling from. So she's a fantastic resource that we hear from and we're in touch with, not just at the meeting, but between meetings too.
Liz Stevens?
Oh, sorry. Oh, well, sorry.
Tina Cahill, I just grabbed this right from her. And I'm not sure if I'm correct here. I'm going to ask our two veterans, and I mean that respectfully. From my understanding, too, you know, students are assessed. They have math assessments and different assessments that are done during the year to see and gauge how students are doing with the curriculum. And I think that that's when we have to look at evaluating the curriculum when the students aren't meeting some of the standards that are placed in front of them. And then I think that's when the curriculum committees come into play and, you know, make some adjustments and there's changes that are made. So it's not just a random, you know, we're going to just take a look and change things. I think there's reasons and standards and ways of evaluating the metrics to see if there should be some changes that are made.
Okay, Liz Stevens?
Thank you for the question. And I just, I won't reiterate what everyone else said, but I just want to say, one of the things I've learned recently in the past few years is parents can have a really valuable and strong voice in the changes that we want to see in QPS. And so as a parent, I think parents and teachers really are really in tune with the curriculum, the content, what are those children learning? What are they not learning? Where are the gaps? And so if you see something that your child, you want them to be learning or think that they should be or they haven't been, speak up, you know? I just encourage all parents to have, you know, like Doug said, reach out. You know, reach out to Doug or Emily or Courtney or call the superintendent's leadership team. Send an email and say, hey, this is what I'm noticing. You will hear back. You know, you think that, I think as parents, sometimes we think, well, they're not going to listen to me. What do I know? You know your kid better than anybody else. You know what your child needs better than anybody else. And so if you notice something, it's okay to call up and say, hey, I think that this could be better. And they want to hear from us. So I just encourage all parents to have that voice and have that perspective and help the school committee members be on the ground and know more about what's going on for families. So that's my call to action for all of us parents out there.
Emily?
Thank you. I just want to add one thing. The other thing that we can do, that I've done a couple of times in the past few years, is I've testified before the Board of Education about changes they were making to those frameworks that I didn't agree with. I didn't get exactly the results I wanted on the vocational frameworks, but some of the changes they were making were going to make it almost impossible for us to have vocational programming in Quincy because we're not a week on, week off. And I did go up and testify verbally and in writing to the Board of Education. I've done that twice in the past four years. So that's another thing the school committee can do. They did make some changes, not the ones I wanted, but they did make some changes that affected other people more. But I think that we have found a way to work around that in Quincy, I'm glad to say. So there are other ways the school committee can advocate for that stuff.
Hi, well, the gentleman over there, did you have a question? Yes.
Hi, channel question. Are any of the candidates advocating for the teaching of critical race theory in our school system?
Not you, I'm not interested.
Okay.
Channel question, just as a concern to one candidate.
Courtney Perdiros, speak to them. Yeah, so let me just say a few things. So I've actually gotten that issue at the doors a lot. And so when I started getting it at the doors, I didn't know where it was coming from, to be perfectly honest. And I went to our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and I said, is anyone, you know, asking us to bring this here? Is, where are you hearing it? And they said, no, no one's talking about bringing it here. It's not something that's come up for our curriculum. So no one in Quincy is talking about it, except when we're hearing it at the doors. And so if you listen to the news, and maybe it's a different situation in a different part of the country, here in Quincy, we just aren't dealing with it right now. What I tell people at the door, for myself personally, I can tell you what I support and don't support on this topic. I don't support anything, putting anything into the curriculum or our schools that would pit races against each other, that would make any child, no matter what their race, feel bad about where they came from, and their heritage, and decisions that were made by their ancestors. I don't want anyone to feel bad about that, about where they came from. We all evolve. We go forward. My children have friends of every race, every nationality at school, and they don't even notice the difference. They don't notice that. I think diversity is something we do really well in QPS. So I would hate anything that would jeopardize that. That being said, I would love to see us teach Native American history, not just at Thanksgiving. I would like us to teach Black history, not just during Black History Month. I would like us to put more role models into our curriculum that are from every nationality, every gender, every sexuality, so that every student has someone to look up to that they can identify with. So things like that I would support. But as far as pitting races against each other, definitely not.
Tina? Just, I would like to say that the CRT, I believe, as a school system, our basic fundamental responsibility is to teach our kids fundamentals, math, English, reading, critical thinking, how to become able to decipher information that's presented to them. And that's our job. Now, critical race theory, I think, is super complicated. And I think it's something that if we teach our children and we give them the education that they deserve, that when they become adults and graduate from K through 12, and they go on to college and they want to delve into a complicated issue like CRT, then that would be their prerogative to do that. But on a K through 12 level, I don't think it's something that I would like to see be brought into the school system.
Emily?
I also would like to say that critical race theory is not developmentally sound for elementary or middle school children. It shouldn't be taught. We teach our children a developmental curriculum for what they can handle. And I'm not an expert on critical race theory, believe me. But I've been to some trainings on it. It doesn't sound to me like anything we should be having in our, teaching our young children. However, I do think we need to teach respect for each other, for all the populations in the city. I think besides the basics, we need to have some social emotional learning for people to feel some commitment to each other in our community, no matter where they come from. So I think that's very important. I believe we should keep focusing on our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. But I do think that critical race theory doesn't fit in with that.
Liz?
And again, for the viewers at home, the question was about critical race theory. I'm sure you picked up on that already. And I just, I echo what Emily and Courtney said, that we do have a responsibility in our school system to help our students understand the social emotional impacts of what's happening for them and the impact that they have on their peers. And to teach them what respectful behavior looks like in an incredibly amazingly diverse community. And I think we have an opportunity to celebrate the diversity that we have in our community as a critical asset of our success and not pit anybody against each other or make anyone feel bad about their race or their skin color. I think we are, we have the ability to highlight all the equity and inclusion and accessibility and sense of belonging values that we all share in Quincy. And how do we hold those up and teach those to our children? I think that's where our opportunity is here.
Liberty?
Stay, just being in all schoolyards, talking to all the parents. From what I hear, critical race theory is nothing that anybody would like to see taught in any of our schools. I also agree. I don't believe it's developmentally appropriate for anybody under senior. You said, Tina, it's something that you'd like to learn. Your four and a half years to go on to college, that could be different. But I would not promote critical race theory.
I'll just make it unanimous. My experience is identical to Courtney's at the door. The only people that ask about critical race theory are the people that are concerned about us doing it. I did the same thing that Courtney did, which is pick up the phone, call the superintendent, deputy superintendent, and ask about it. And it is not embedded in what we do here in QPS. I concur with everything that was said about treating about respect and diversity and inclusion and all of the issues that I think that we're handling pretty darn well here at Quincy Public Schools. So I think it's a unanimous answer.
I just want to say, I didn't. I hope that you didn't think that I do not believe in a diverse, equitable, and inclusive education for our students. So, you know, I mean, the fundamentals is one thing, but I also do believe that, you know, that the diversity in our city is something that we should be very proud of and the way we all live together in the city of Quincy. That's why I love it here. And I want to be able to contribute to the school system and the city that I love and live in. So I just didn't want to give that impression, that's all.
Anyone else ask? Gentlemen?
Hi, just a quick question to our current school board members and their challengers. The last 18 months or so have really turned public education upside down, especially with the pandemic. So I'd like to ask the current school board members, what accomplishments would you like to tout with adjusting towards education in the pandemic? And any sort of shortcomings that you openly have? And to the Speaker, the chef, and the scale as local parents, do you think that, basically just giving them your report cards, the school committee members, your report cards on it? So it's really open to whoever wants to converse.
Courtney? Is the question what the school system is doing now to address?
No, it's more of like a retrospective. Because, you know, we are turning more into in-person learning, but that wasn't always going to be the case, you know? At this time last year, we didn't know what we were going to be. So I'd like to ask and reaffirm, what personal accomplishments during that time would you like to share with everyone? And are there any personal shortcomings that you would have liked to change? And those on the outside, what are the school committees? Is there anything that you would like to see changed? Any personal shortcomings you see within the school committee?
Courtney, Emily? Thank you. Thank you for that question. Obviously, it's topmost on all of our minds, you know, getting everyone back. But definitely looking retrospectively. I was fortunate enough, I mentioned that I didn't actually make it on the school committee two years ago when I ran. But very shortly after that, when the pandemic hit, the superintendent asked me to be on the task force, reentry, reentry task force, sorry, looking at every issue. We spent, we met weekly for about an hour and a half, a couple of times a week early on there, looking at every issue from how we were going to handle, you know, recess and lunch and busing and, you know, what we were going to do on every single topic. So that was such a great experience for me. That task force was made up of parents, teachers, administrators. It was fantastic. It was the way we should be handling every topic that's complicated, just having everyone at the table, everyone having a seat and being able to talk it through. We also did a lot of surveys to parents to find out what they prefer, if they wanted a hybrid model, if they, what type of a hybrid model, if they wanted a week on, a week off, three days on, you know, all that stuff. So we reached out to parents, we reached out to teachers. And I think we did the best that we could to put a plan together that made the most amount of sense. Certainly, remote learning is not ideal. It's not how we do school. So it wasn't going to be perfect. But I'm proud of the way that we did it, the kind of comprehensive, working together way that we did that. I thought was really fantastic. And that was really under the superintendent's leadership there. And he was brand new at the time. So that I thought was a really well-done, well-done team. And then when we were able to, you know, do remote learning, kind of being in front of the screen, it worked for some kids. It didn't work for a lot of kids. Definitely a mixed bag, but mostly not great. So we do have a lot of learning loss that we have to make up for. I think our MCAS have shown that. So I think we just, that's where our focus is now, just addressing that using the ESAR money that we're able to get to address, you know, to create extra programs before school, after school, during school, whatever we can do to reach those kids and make sure that they're, that we bring them back up. And we also need to address their social emotional needs. I'm not sure if you've heard about this TikTok thing about breaking the bathrooms and, you know, you see kids on bikes and being disruptive. I think maybe we thought our kids were just going to need a big hug. But I think our kids are kind of angry. I think their kids have had no control. And they're trying to control things they can control. And it's acting out a lot. So I think it's just going back to rules, values, you know, the structure, the expectations, the respect. So it's definitely all of those things, giving everyone space to come back, but also supporting them in doing so. Thank you.
Doug, and then Liz, and then Emily.
Everybody wants to talk? It was a good question, apparently. So I, you know, the last 18 months were a hell for all of us, right? And I want to, a big thank you for the teachers. I think the teachers and the parents deserve a round of applause for what they did in best of bad situations. It's not Quincy. It's not Massachusetts. It's not America. It's a global issue and a big problem. But, you know, as a parent of two, who saw the impacts of remote learning, it is not a successful model that I want to employ long-term in the city of Quincy. That being said, I think we did a lot of good things on the school committee. In the four years that I've been on the school committee, we hired a new superintendent for the first time in 20 years. We boosted dual enrollment classes, which anybody that has kids that are in high school or about to go to high school, that is like free money for, essentially, for going to college. We improved career and tech education classes. We set up a new website. We've invested extraordinarily in our school buildings and improving the airflow and the air quality in the school buildings. There are a lot of investments and a lot of good things. One of the things that I asked the superintendent to come up with was a list of COVID keepers, things that we can look at and potentially keep moving forward. And there are a lot of good things. I mean, I think a lot, what we saw was, like, public meetings across America and the globe, the number of people that participate remotely is staggeringly high. The parent participation remotely is much higher than if you, you know, set up a meeting at Atlantic Minute School. You get so many more people that come to that. The input that we've had on the surveys has been off the charts. It's really helped inform and guide Quincy Public Schools and enrich us. And I love to see the parent engagement, which I think is a super important part. Somebody mentioned earlier about the fact, you know, we're moving ahead with the new special ed center. I mean, one of the things that I'm most proud of is that we took a pause on that to get parent and teacher input before we actually cast a vote on it. All of that is critical moving forward. So there are going to be things that we're going to learn and we're going to move forward. I think the school committee knows crystal clear what that list is that we like and what we may not necessarily keep. And I'm sure parents and teachers have additional ideas that we're completely open to. But, you know, out of all bad, good things come. And I think that we have to take the opportunity to see what those things were and move forward and improve, you know, tackle the learning loss, tackle the social emotional impacts, and get our students back on track.
Liz? Or Liberty first?
So I had six children on computer screens during the pandemic, which made for a very, very difficult learning environment. You can only spread them out so far. Kindergarten needed scissors. First grader needs crayons. Also can't be near each other. It was very difficult. And running for school committee is something that I had thought of previously, but to be honest, running a campaign was not exciting to me. And during the pandemic, I realized that I didn't, I didn't feel that there was enough parent representation. I don't, I didn't feel that the people making the policies could really feel what was going on. Speaking to a lot of parents, they were really dealing with topics and issues and they were quite frustrated. There wasn't enough transparency. They didn't know who to turn to or who to look to for answers or where they were going to come. Even with this upcoming year, do they have to wear masks? Do they not? Like, we're waiting until the last minute to find out all of this. It was very difficult. The learning loss is so real. All of my other children liked kindergarten reading quite well. And my daughter, you know, barely knew all 26 players. So the teachers certainly tried their hardest, but it's extremely hard to engage through a computer screen. My heart really went out to a lot of teachers that I spoke to. A lot of teachers were not getting or receiving the support that they felt that they needed as well to do their job. So I think that we could do better on many fronts. I feel like we could support the teachers better. I think that we could listen to the parents a little bit better. And I really feel like we need to keep an ear out, like we said, for the social emotional. These kids are hurting. They're hurting really, really badly. You know, it affected them in many different ways. And I don't think that one size fits all is going to work. But I think that we definitely need to try a lot better.
Well, I didn't have six kids on screens, but it felt like it some days. I had one child on screen who I, you know, bought every fidget toy I could find. I had one child on screen who I, you know, bought every fidget toy I could find on the Amazon, and still he had a lot of trouble staying focused. And I could hear his teacher saying, you know, "Okay, Billy, can you stop writing in the chat? I need you to..." "Okay, Johnny, can you, can you keep your eyes open and sit up on your bed?" I mean, this is what our teachers were trying to do while they're trying to teach math and English and, you know, keep the kids engaged and happy for six hours on a screen. These are six, five, six, seven-year-olds who just are not made. You talk about a developmental approach, right? Like, this is not developmentally appropriate for kids. I'm on Zoom for an hour and a half and I, like, am going crazy. So this is not ideal for anyone. And I think in addition to, you know, vocalizing our support for the teachers, I think we need to put our money where our mouth is and give them raises. We know that there's money available in the city for lots of different projects and that we can voice our support for the first responders, but if we're not backing that up with the financial support that they have absolutely earned over this time, then what are our words worth? I think that we need to absolutely show the value that we have for our teachers with a raise and bonuses. And I think they need to have a contract. They're working without a contract right now, and it's really a shame. It's shame on us as a community. I think that we haven't advocated more for that. One of the other things that I echo with Liberty is, you know, I've realized that my experience wasn't being represented on the school committee, and I do believe that every member of our school committee cares deeply about our children. And I think there's a difference between understanding theoretically what the impacts of your decision are compared to understanding and living with it each day. And that's what some of us were doing, was living with it. And I also had contemplated school committee for a while, and certainly, working, raising kids, and running for school committee was not something that was maybe the smartest move for me and my family, but I felt like I had to. I had to stop just complaining at the playground and be part of the solution. You know, I'm someone who, when I hear that motto of "See something, say something," I say something. I'm that advocate. I was, I grew up with four siblings and I was the truth teller. I was the one that said, "Hey, this is not right. We got to do something different." And that's how I've lived my life as an advocate, as a social worker, as a parent. My husband's here and he'll tell you. Sometimes he doesn't always want to hear it, but I'm going to tell you the truth and I'm going to tell you how we can do better. I think we do an amazing job and I think we can do better. And I think the pandemic highlighted some of our challenges and some of our assets, and I think we need to all be involved in making our system better for all of our kids.
Emily, I think sometimes...
I won't say too much, I'll jump in. I think that I actually want to commend the school committee because, you know, not, I wouldn't have wanted to be in that, not I wouldn't want to be, because I think that I could have brought, again, an experienced, practical approach to the discussions that you probably had to go through at that time, to try to figure out what's the best, you know, what are the best options that we have for our students, our teachers. I mean, it was an unprecedented situation, right? So in retrospect, I can't give any answer because I wasn't sitting at the table, and I can only imagine that it was a difficult decision and situation to be in. What I do think from my perspective is what we can be doing now is, again, looking at what the situation that was presented to us and how can we do better if we ever had to be in a situation like that again. And this is where the American Rescue Act money that's coming to the city for the school system, I think we're going to have it for three or four years, where we can put together some programs and initiatives that will deal with the learning loss, which we know that students have, I mean, there's absolutely no way that students didn't experience learning loss during, during that time. And social, emotional issues. I have friends, I have a friend now whose son is in first grade, missed kindergarten and, you know, was starting kindergarten, got bumped out and then had to go to first grade, and he's like really having a hard time going back after spending, you know, 18 months or however many, a year with his mom and dad, having to go back into a school setting. He'll do it, because kids will do it, because most kids will be able to, are more resilient than we think. But we need to make sure we have the support in the schools for them to do that, and this is where some of those funds can be used to do that specifically. And on the, and in the front in regards to educators, I think it's important for us to give them the professional training and development that they can use towards digital learning. Help them to learn how to use some of the software and the hardware and the tools that can help them in a situation where they might have to do distance learning in the future. So those are places where we can learn to do better from this experience and use the resources that we have that are going to be available to us to do that. So that would be mine. And I have four kids, and if I had to teach them and work from home and do all that that these parents have to do with the tech, someone would not come out alive. And it probably would have been, it probably would have been me, but it would have been scary, you know, so.
Emily?
Thank you, Kenz, thank you for the question. So in the summer of 2020, the school committee was meeting daily, almost, three or four times a week, and to Liberty's response, things were changing every single day. We thought we were going to be out for two weeks, then we thought we were going to be out for two weeks more. We never knew. And so we, even now, the mask, we didn't know what was going to happen with the mask. The mask was supposed to end on October 1st. Now they've moved to November 1st. So there's not a whole lot more we could have done to get ready, except for some of the things that we did, and I'll tell you where some of the fallings were, that we didn't know of that. One of the things that I asked for in the summer of 2020, when we were giving Chromebooks to every kid in the world in the spring, I realized, because my friends, I was a member of the QEA, I was a member of the administration, I have a lot of friends who teach in Quincy still, they said to me, "Yeah, they're giving the kids Chromebooks, but I'm using my own device to teach these kids at home." I don't even have, I don't even have a school-issued laptop. And that was shocking to me, because when I left Quincy, I went to Boston Public Schools, might have had a mistake, but everybody there had a laptop. You walked in, they gave you a laptop. You were expected to do your job without that. So I went to the mayor and said, "We need to get these teachers laptops. They shouldn't be using their own devices when their kids are at home trying to use their own devices." It was really, so, but the PD, I have to say that they've done a ton of PD, a lot of it coming from the teachers themselves. They've been finding experts, they have done a lot of PD. I actually attended some of it, it was over my head, but I did attend it. But we found some flaws, and I think one of the things, we do have learning loss, the MAP assessment is showing us that, it's a much better indicator than the MCAS, though we do have the MCAS. But one of the things I brought up at the school committee meeting last week is, there are other subjects and other students that we're not paying attention to. So like, if you have a student who has been French more advanced in 2020 and wound up being kicked out the last four months of that class, and that was in French II the next year in remote learning, full remote learning, is that kid really ready for French III advanced? And it's not tested, so we don't know. So I asked the school, at the school committee meeting, if they would reach out to those department heads and teachers that are not in the tested subjects and make sure that those kids are okay also, because I think that is one of our gaps. And another thing, and Mr. Gatra and I have talked about this forever, but if you were a parent this year, our teachers are using both Google Docs, Google Classroom, and Aspen. And I know several high school kids whose parents did not know how badly they were doing, because the teacher was not posting it in Aspen, they were posting it in Google Docs. The parents all have access to Aspen, but they don't necessarily have access to the Google Docs unless the kid gives them their ID, their password. And, you know, kids really aren't going to do that, I mentioned it to their parents. So I know of several parents who stopped me while I was not going to walk in and said, "My kid's always been a really good student, and suddenly he's got like a C minus in biology." And I had no idea, because it wasn't posted in Aspen. So we need to come up with some consistent way to manage that in our school system, and that is one of the things we'll hopefully be negotiating in the new contract, that we will get some uniformity and that everybody will be using the same thing. So if you don't have, if you have a student taking six subjects in high school, you'll have to figure out which teacher is using which domain to give the answers.
Thank you. I have a question that was emailed in, so I'll read that out and whoever would like to respond. It says, "How do you feel about mask policy? Do you think the DESI guidelines..." Is that how you pronounce that? "Do you think the DESI guidelines should be a blanket decision or based on each city or town's school system? And lastly, what are your thoughts in vaccine mandates?" So we have mask policy, vaccine mandates, and should the DESI guidelines be blanket or based on each city or town's school system? Liberty?
I believe the same for the masks and the vaccine mandate. I think that we need to protect parent rights. I think that we can educate, we can encourage, but I think that the final decision needs to stay in the parent's hands.
Thank you. Anyone else? Emily?
Thank you. I think the vaccine is not fully approved for people, so I don't think there should be a mandate. I mean, we have plenty of vaccine mandates, which we handle perfectly in our schools. I work sometimes as a school nurse, so I'm doing that all the time, but we have those, and most kids, without an exception, are vaccinated against a lot of things. But this is not ready for that to be a mandate. It absolutely is not ready for that to be a mandate. And I think that I feel as a nurse that we have a responsibility to each other also, and until the numbers are low enough and the vaccination rate is high enough, the state has told us that if we have 80% of our buildings, staff and students vaccinated, who can be vaccinated, and hopefully that's going to increase, that we will be able to drop the mask mandate, because we will be protected enough. So I am comfortable with that.
Doug?
Thank you, Tina. Vaccine mandates, I mean, Emily was spot on, but if you think about how long it takes to actually vote at the state level for a vaccine mandate, it's years. I mean, when you think about when they, when they basically said certain mandates that we have for vaccines in Massachusetts to get there, it's years after the onset of the disease and the issue and then moving forward. So we're, you know, we're decades away, possibly, if this even has to happen for anything like that. And I think that that requires some lengthy science and discussion and all of that, so I don't, I don't think that that's anything. Also, the availability and applicability to younger children, I don't think that has a place, you know. The mask mandate, you know, having served 14 years on the city council, to me, I remember the smoking ban, remember the smoking ban? How divisive the smoking ban was? When there's uniformity across the board at the state level, it really helps bring clarity to communities in a big way. And so there is value to me in understanding what's happening, where the state falls down on this, and of course, three days after we discussed it, the governor comes out with the statewide mandate on masks, you know. There were a lot of complications based on the state guidelines that would basically require an inordinate amount of testing that would have to happen. I mean, you have to look at the state guidelines, what they are with the testing, and then do you participate in test and stay, or who has to quarantine based on who has a mask and who doesn't. I just think that there's enormous value to the state making decisions on complicated issues like that, and that's how I feel on those two issues. Anybody else?
Courtney?
I think Tina had her first. I'm going to let you go. Yeah. Well, I'm going to reiterate what Doug and Emily said. As far as vaccine mandate, again, it's, I'm vaccinated, personal choice, it was right for me. I feel like I'm healthy and strong enough to be able to take the vaccine and not have any issues that might complicate things. So I do not believe in a vaccine mandate, and I really don't believe in the mask mandate either. I'm fine with the mask mandate if that's what the state is going to give us, because I think it's the least invasive form of protection that we have for our students and the teachers, if that's what, you know, is coming down from the state level. I don't think it's absolutely necessary based on what the vaccine numbers are in our state and the reason why we're supposed to be vaccinated is so we don't have to wear masks. But I think where the complicated issue is, is that every day we have different information that's being disseminated to the public, and it makes it hard for any of us to really decide what's the best way to go, because it's hard to trust what the information is when it changes so frequently. And I think that's one of the issues and why it's complicated and hard to make decisions on mandates anyway. And so when DESI comes out with, or the state came out with the mask mandate, it took it out of our hands anyway, so that it wasn't something that we could really even have a vote on, so.
Courtney?
So I just wanted to add, for those of you that didn't watch the special meeting that we had in late August on the masks, so we had a, first of all, let me back up and say, no one wants to wear a mask, right? No one wants to wear one. I don't want to wear one, I'm vaccinated. I got vaccinated because I don't want to wear one. We, no one wants to wear one. No kid wants to wear one. I have three. They don't want to wear one either. We do it because that's, that's what we need to do right now. So to kind of say that we want masks, I think is a little, I just want to be clear on that, that we're doing it because it's a need. We're doing it to protect our community and each other and our health of everyone in our, everyone in our QPS community, including everyone's families. So, but at that meeting, we were, we were given some guidance from DESI that said that if you were masked in school, there was a greater chance that you could stay in school and you didn't have to quarantine at home. And where we saw that the remote learning was so negative for a lot of children, a lot of families, we wanted to, the priority was getting our kids back in front of a live teacher, back in front with their friends, you know, whatever we could do to get them back. So that's, that's kind of why we made the decision that we made before the state came down with the blanket statement, was just because we wanted the priority for kids to get back where they could test and stay, they could do different things, and we had more flexibility to keep them in school if they wore masks. So that was the trade-off that we wanted, just because we wanted our kids back in school.
You mentioned DESI a few times. Could you just tell the audience what that stands for?
Yep, it's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you. Liz, and Doug?
Yes, I also agree that we're too early on in this phase to mandate vaccines, but that we have a track record of mandating other types of vaccines once they're, you know, FDA-approved and have lots of evidence behind their efficacy. And so if that's the path that the state goes down, I would support that. And I also agree that it's a public health issue. Certainly, COVID is a public health issue, and when I wear a mask, I not only protect myself, but I protect all of you. And, you know, for my personal values, I believe that we're all interconnected and we have a responsibility to and for each other. And if wearing a mask is part of how I keep you safe and you healthy, then that's what I'll do, and that's what I expect of my kids, too. I have two little ones that are too young to be vaccinated yet, they don't qualify for the vaccination, and if, they need to be in school. They need to be in school. I mean, for all of our sanity, like you said, no, like, this goes on much longer, someone's not coming out alive one way or another, so I'd rather have them in school, wearing a mask, getting that peer connection, getting that in-person learning, getting a sense of community and connectedness. And I think it does teach them an important lesson about our responsibility as a member of a community to do hard things sometimes. And if the hard thing is wearing a mask, then that's what we'll do as a family, and we'll come through on the other side, and we'll all be okay. There's no, you know, significant detrimental impacts to wearing masks, and so we'll come through it on the other side and be a stronger community because of it.
Doug?
It's unrelated to the COVID and the mask question, but I just wanted to give a shout out. We have two members of the Quincy City Council here, and the Quincy City Council has been an extraordinary supporter of public education in Quincy, and I see Councilor Noel Labana and Councilor Nina Liang, and I just want to thank them for being here tonight and supporting education and participating throughout the duration. I think it's an important partnership that we have with the city council, and appreciate it.
Thank you. I think we better finish up. We will have time to do closing comments, any statements our candidates want to make briefly, and then you can meet and greet after that, and we have some candy, and if there are cookies left out there, you can have those, too. Thank you very much, everyone. And so who would like to begin on their closing? Well, we've heard that's a little difficult. Okay, Tina, Katie?
I'm probably, I'm not going to stand up if you don't mind, but what I will say is that, again, you know, thank you for being here and learning about the candidates. You have six of us who all have various experience and backgrounds. I am asking for your vote, because I feel as though I can bring a comprehensive view to the school committee. As a parent, who understands what it is to advocate for your children, I have that background. As an educator and administrator, I understand that it's important for us to work with the teachers and with the staff and administration, and to understand the mandates, federal, state, licensing, accreditation, all the important things that are in the background behind your child's education. And I just think at this time, I can be a good, practical, experienced voice. And I just think at this time, I can be a good, practical, experienced voice at the table so that when we deal with some of the issues and initiatives and things that come before us, I'll be able to work with our colleagues and the teachers and administration to be able to give our children the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And Courtney, for theos, let's say their names again because if you don't know them, you haven't learned six.
I'm going to come down here. It's a little crowded up there when I'm yelling at the microphone there. So I just wanted to, again, thank you all for coming out tonight. We didn't get a chance to talk a lot tonight about things that we're excited to work on. So I just wanted to list a few things kind of in my closing remarks that I'm excited to, to continue working on. Advanced curriculum for our younger students. We have an advanced program that started in fifth grade, that starts in fifth grade in our schools, bringing that down younger and making sure that those, those kids didn't get smart when they entered fifth grade. They were smart in first grade, second grade, third grade. And it's up to the classroom teacher to keep them challenged, which, you know, creates a different experience depending on the teacher, depending on how motivated they, they are and how, how first they are in meeting those expectations and those demands of an advanced child. So I'd love to see our system with 9,000 kids in it have a uniform way of dealing with kids younger and keeping them challenged and engaged all the way through from day one. So that I'm excited to work on. I'd like to work on facilities across the system. We have a lot of new buildings in our system. We have the new Southwest, which is beautiful. Central is still, still pretty new in the big scheme of things, Quincy High. But we have a lot of older buildings, too, that could use our help. Point Webster, the media center down there, it's in the basement. No windows, no natural light, hard chairs, not a lot of books. Not super exciting for our middle schoolers to go down there and engage with, with reading and research where it's Southwest and Central. It's beautiful in there. They have vast selections of books, beautiful floor-to-ceiling windows, comfy stuff to sit on, and, you know, all the things that you would want to have for your middle school kids. So just kind of working on making it equitable across the system. We also have, I'm going to use a local example from Squanum. I'm sure a lot of you went to Squanum School. I've knocked out a lot of doors and there's a lot of people that are still here that went to the Squanum School. So back when you went, they had a food delivery system where they hand cranked food up a dumbwaiter and brought the food into the cafeteria. Well, funny enough, that's still how we do it. Still how we do it. And I know we're getting a new building, but this should have been fixed in 1990, 19, you know, 1995, 2000, any of those years, we could have looked at fixing that. So to just kind of keep putting off things that are broken or not fantastic or probably not OSHA-certified, all of those things, we have to keep looking at ways to invest in our system. So that's something I'd really like to work on, bringing fifth grade back to, from Quincy Point. In our neighborhood, fifth grade goes to middle school. And as you can see, this is my 10-year-old. She is not a middle schooler. She is 10 and she still really loves dogs and puppies and unicorns. And when she goes in the bathroom, I don't want her to see things that eighth graders are doing or, you know, subjecting to. So I would love to work on bringing those fifth graders back to the elementary school, just like you have here. So they get one more year of being confident, building that maturity before they're subjected and faced with these more mature themes. So those are just some of the things I'd really like to work on. Our special ed building is going to be coming back online, so I'd love to be able to work on that, including parent voices, including teacher voices, including as many voices as I can. And I'd love the opportunity to continue. I love this job. And I've only been doing it for a couple of months so far, and I just really love the opportunity to continue to work on it. Thank you very much.
Emily, Eva?
Thank you. Thank you, Louise. So, yeah, I'm just very happy to be here and be able to speak to you all again. I want you to know that if you've ever watched a school committee meeting, you know I go in every single meeting completely prepared. I've read everything. I've done research on everything. I do the work for the meetings. I'm an independent voice, a very independent voice. It sometimes gets me in trouble, but that's okay with me. I love the work. I really do love the work. I love working for the teachers, the students, and the families. I know the work because I've been working in the, in the system for years and then I've been working in the community doing the same work. So I really know what the work entails. I love working with my colleagues and I really, hopefully, ask you to consider me for one of your votes. Thank you.
Doug Gatto?
Thank you very much. I want to thank Louise and the Squanum Community Association. I want to thank Pastor Doug for hosting us here tonight. I want to thank Cable for being here so that people across the city can see this. You know, pre-pandemic, we used to start the school committee meetings with what was called Inspire Quincy. And it was basically, they went, Cable went out and went into schools all across the city and filmed inside the classroom in terms of exactly what our kids were learning day in, day out. And so every two weeks when the school committee got together, we got to be inspired by what the kids in our classrooms were doing. I'm so excited that our kids are back in the schools right now and we're turning the page, hopefully turning the page on this pandemic to get to a place that as a parent, as a father, as a school committee member, as a taxpayer, I want to see us inspire Quincy again with all of the great things that the students of Quincy are doing. On November 2nd, you have an opportunity. You have a lot of super capable candidates that are here today. I've been, I've served the city on the school committee for the last four years. I've been a teacher, actually, professor for 20 years at Suffolk University. I served 14 years on the city council. I believe that I have the experience, the dedication, and the commitment, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Liberty, Shae?
Hello. So this is my first time running for anything. I did not desire to be a political candidate, but I have always been passionate about children and education, and that passion continues today. I feel we are in unprecedented times and that you would like to have someone with some common sense, with some practicality, with some experience, maybe a little more than a little bit of experience with Quincy Public Schools. And I think that I could advocate for all of the families of Quincy instead of just my own and those that are close to me. I've unwillingly become a resource to all of those in Word One, to many families, and I would love to do the same for the rest of the city. So thank you for consideration. I very much appreciate it. Vote on November 2nd.
Liz Speakman?
So I remember when I was pregnant with my oldest son and my mom said to me, "Having a baby is like having part of your soul walk around outside your body." And it's true, right? It's true. When you have a baby, when you have your own child, it's like this precious part of you that is walking around unprotected. And I know that's true for me and I know that it's true for all of you. And I'm committed to advocating for all of our kids, all of our families, as much as, and if not more, than my own child. I'm not advocating for things that are going to benefit my kids. They're okay. But I know there's so many folks in our community that need more access to supports and resources. And that's what I'm committed to centering, what their needs are. And I believe that our campaign is reflecting our values. We have an incredibly diverse team that represents many different aspects of our community. We have a website that is in four different languages because we believe in language accessibility and we want to make sure that everyone in our community can access the information about what we stand for as clearly as they should be able to when they participate in the Quincy Public Schools. And so I am living my values through this campaign and I have 20 years of experience advocating for issues that don't affect me at all in any way, but they affect the most marginalized and vulnerable in our society. That's my track record and that's what I'm going to continue here in Quincy. The website is votespeakman.com, so please check it out. And whatever language you speak, you'll be able to access all the information on there. And I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you very much, everyone. The candidates have put some literature out on the tables right immediately outside the store. And I'd like to thank them for being here tonight. And I think we have a group of some of the most caring, committed, loving, dedicated people that I've seen working for our city. Thank you, everyone.